Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, February 25th, 2003. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we invite you to join us. For those of you unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. This being Tuesday and the first meeting of the week, we have scheduled both a salute to the flag and a moment of inspiration to introduce our special guest today. No strangers to City Hall. Let me first acknowledge Councilmember Dennis Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's an honor to welcome back to City Hall Mr. Rick Orloff, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the Moment of Inspiration. And we have a little surprise for our friendly City Hall reporter, Rick Orloff.
Thank you. Please put your hands over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I never thought about being inspirational. It's been quite an adventure for the last six months. All I can say is that if you haven't seen a doctor in 15 years like I have, you might want to think about doing it. You learn to appreciate some of the little things in life and some of the big things. And one of the things we often take for granted and complain about is work. And it is important not only in helping provide a fuller life, but in helping define who you are and how you get along in society. And particularly, I'm fortunate to have a career, I really love being a reporter, and covering government. And I don't know if, sometime we get so wrapped up in what we're doing and the day-to-day stuff that we forget how important it is in the real world. And I think that the LA City Council does do a good job in reflecting its constituents. And the only thing I would urge is that you do get out more and see, listen to your constituents and see what they have to say. And that way you'll get it back double-fold of what you do and what you experience. And thank you for this.
I passed out to all of my colleagues an article that Rick wrote that appeared yesterday in the Daily News. And we were going to bring him a welcome-back cake, but due to his situation, we thought that this would be more appropriate. And we have a welcome-back certificate signed by the council members, the mayor, Laura Chick, Rocky Delguido, the city family welcoming Rick Orloff, Daily News reporter, back to City Hall. Rick, from your fans here at City Hall.
Welcome back, Rick. You've certainly been missed. I have a few council members who wish to say a few words. Ms. Gruel?
Rick, I think Dennis said it best that the city family signed that proclamation because we feel you're part of the city family. We have missed you terribly, really. I mean, we talked frequently about how much longer it would be till you could come back to City Hall. We were all thrilled that you came back yesterday. And I went over to stop and see you on the way over here, and they said, "Oh, he's already in City Hall, you know, over in council doing his job." I've grown a little bit since you left City Hall, but you have been just really the voice of the people at the Daily News. And I know that it's not only those of us at City Council that have missed you, but your readers have missed you. And I want to compliment to the Daily News about how supportive they have been of you as well. Kept saying you were on vacation and not there, but your column would come back. And so that always gave us hope. So just know that you are beloved by so many of us here in council, we're happy to see you here.
Ms. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome back, Rick. I think it's so important for us to have institutional memory. It's one of the great reasons that a council member like Tom LeBonde, when he tells stories of Los Angeles, grounds us and lets us know where we've been and where we're going. I think the same thing on the journalistic side comes from you in that you have been one of the few reporters that's actually stayed here and stayed on this beat. So I'm just happy that the Valley's Fair Share is finally back.
Mr. Holden.
Rick, I don't know if other members of the council have been telling you the truth, but I really missed you. And we had a relationship over the past 16 years or so where you always told the story as it was. You already reported the news. Very often that's not the thing they do around here. You never bother to editorialize and put your own opinion in. And that's so important. I'm leaving, but one nice thing about you, Rick, is that you're going to be here. And you remain, hopefully, the conscious of this whole body. You have longevity. You've seen many stories. You've seen many members come and go. You've heard them when they came in and you listened as they spoke, as they were here. You could hear the difference in the message. Do us a favor, who will not be here, write about it. Let them know what the differences are and hopefully they become good, better, better representatives. Think of the people first as they should and ought to. Still, tell the story, Rick. We need you, Rick, and more Ricks here at City Hall. God bless you and we're glad that you're well and back on the job.
Ms. Miskowski.
I just want to add my congratulations and real appreciation that you're back. Not only are the stories, did we miss the stories and the accuracy and the finesse with which you told them, but also that great Monday morning column, which I said was better than a cup of coffee and getting started about learning what was going on at City Hall. And Mr. Garcetti, I wasn't sure whether you said Mr. LeBonde drowns us or grounds us.
Rick, before I talk about you, I want to talk about Sidney Miskowski. No, but I'm so glad that you're here, Rick, as a person and the challenges. Some of us, we don't realize the importance of watch on our own health, you know? And you even spoke to it in your remarks about neglecting a checkup for 15 years. And the six months of the battle that you had, then you've achieved the ability to come back to work, which is so important. It's an important message for anyone who's listening to this, for trying to take care of ourselves personally because we all think we're never going to stop. But also from the aspect of your reporting, what's so unique about you and all who should follow in your work is how you have friends throughout the structure of government who want to share with you their ideas and thoughts that you add to the mix, which hopefully directs the stream in the right direction. The stream of energy, the stream of focus, the stream of good, which government should be about. And then shine light on when there's not good and shine light on when there needs to be changed. But you certainly have done that over the years and I'm so pleased, as Wendy mentioned, how they always said you're on vacation, but now that you're back and your column will be filled again as it was yesterday, next Monday. So I'm just so pleased that you're back and all that you've done for the history of Los Angeles as a reporter for the Los Angeles Daily News.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Rick, I just wanted to say welcome back also and that you lead by example, not only by the quality of your journalism, the objectivity, and the insightful reporting that you do and will do, but the fact that you're willing to share your experiences and your feelings about what you've just gone through with respect to your diabetes. And that in and of itself is a lesson. So thanks and welcome back and look forward to your salt-free, sugar-free parties on Friday.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome back, Rick. I want to tell you a couple of things. The first is that when I was running for office and I'd never had anything to do with City Hall before, every once in a while, I mean, I would get up Monday morning, go right online, and I'd read your column. And every once in a while, you'd mention me or my race in your column. And it put such a spring in my week when you did that, to tell people that, you know, I'd been in Orloff's column. It was the coolest thing and it still is the coolest thing. And I, you know, there are a lot of people who you meet who are in City Hall every day, but there are few people I know who make others as happy as you do. I know you made me and everybody I work with happy just to be around before your hiatus. And I really look forward to that, that same cheer that you're going to bring around here while you cover everybody and you're objective and you sling the things you got to sling at them. It just, it makes me, I walked in, I saw Mr. Zine standing up, I saw Mr. Holden standing up, I saw balloons, I didn't know what was going on. And then I saw you and it really brought a smile to my face. Every once in a while, Mr. Zine and Mr. Holden bring a smile to my face too, but you really brought a meaningful smile to my face this morning. Congratulations and thanks for coming back, Rick.
Mr. Burnson.
He waited till I got my mouth full. Rick, it's really great to see you back. I just want to tell you that I hope you enjoyed the little trinket we sent over to your place to help you pass the time. And let me just say that Rick's been around here longer than me, and that's a long time. And all the time that he's been here, he's been one of the most fair reporters that I think has ever walked through these halls. One without malice, as sometimes exists, and one who's got his story straight. And I'm really glad to see you back. I hope you're feeling better. Are you back at work now or what? I saw your column the other day. So we'll be exchanging some stories privately later, okay? But welcome back, Rick.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, welcome back, Rick. We, as I said earlier, we really did miss you. We thought about you a lot. You were in many of our prayers. And hopefully, those of us who have not had the opportunity to have that much time off will learn from you. And I think your column about the lessons that you learned are really important. And I think for all of us, we have to have at some point in our life a real coming to know what's important in life and what matters and what really is of value in our everyday existence. So hopefully you will be able to continue to teach people what is important in life. And as Jack said, it's very cool, the first time you appear in Rick Orloff's column. The first time I appeared was before I was running for City Council. And you overheard a conversation that I had in a local restaurant about Kathleen Brown and myself and what in the world compelled us to run for office. And we both agreed it was a defective gene that propelled us to this office. And you quoted that and it was the first time that was in a column and had a lot of comments about that afterwards. I know your golfing buddies miss you. They talk about you all the time and hopefully one day you're going to also be able to get back to your other great love. So welcome back, Rick. We really did miss you.
Mr. Reyes.
I just want to say welcome back. I look forward to running into you in the hallways and basking in the sun when you take that break and hopefully without that cigarette. Thanks.
And I believe...
And I believe that's all members present, with the exception of myself, Rick. I also want to say welcome back. You have been missed, as I mentioned, in the era of term limits and transition here in Los Angeles City Hall. You've been part of the fixture, the institution that smart council members tap into on occasion to get that historical perspective and some of the background that we may not always read in the reports, but are so, so important to take into consideration as we sometimes make decisions out here on what to do, how to do things. And certainly, you provide a very valuable service in your reporting to the Daily News readers. Sometimes we agree, sometimes we don't agree, and sometimes you test this council, this body and this city, and get us out of our comfort zone, but that's healthy for the process. But you do it with gentlemanly style, and we thank you for that. And if you don't mind, only because we were talking briefly before council, sharing with the public a little bit more about your story, the 15 years of not visiting the doctor and what you've recently been dealing with is the complications due to diabetes. Diabetes is something that is very, very prevalent, and I'm fortunate enough to serve on the Los Angeles County Diabetes Association Board, and it's someone like you who helps bring attention to the disease, to its consequences if it's not diagnosed, if it's not controlled. And we shudder to think what diabetes almost costs us here in City Hall, but you're back. You're back just as strong as before, and if part of the welcome back message can be sending that information out to the general public who may be watching at home or reading about this, please get yourself checked. More than half of the people who suffer from diabetes don't know they have it. So welcome back, and we have a lot to write about.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to thank all the members for their very kind comments. It doesn't mean we're gonna change the news coverage at all. And I am grateful that there aren't term limits for reporters, but thank you again, and I really do appreciate it.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Burnson, Galenter, Garcetti, Grul, Hahn, Holden, LaBonde, Miskowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Weiss, Sign, Padilla. Thirteen members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Zine moves, and Ms. Grul seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Reyes moves, and Ms. Hahn seconds.
On the regular agenda, Mr. President, item number one is an item for which public hearing has been held. It's confirmation of William A. Robertson as permanent director of the Bureau of Street Services.
Okay, is Mr. Robertson here? If he can come forward at this time. Members, consideration of this matter has been held in committee. We have reports recommending confirmation. Are there members wishing to be heard on this item? Members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
You're doing such a good job. It's a unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Forthwith, please, and thank you. Next item, please.
Next items, Mr. President. Items for which public hearings have been held, items two through eight. Item number seven, there are two report, or a motion and a report on the file. And item number eight, a motion is required inasmuch as it is the report is submitted without recommendation.
Okay, members, we have items two through eight now before us. Consideration of these matters has been held in committee. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearing. Seeing none. Members wishing to call any specials? Mr. Weiss calls seven and eight special. Any other specials on items two through six? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President. Items for which public hearings have not been held, items nine through 14.
Nine through 14 now before us, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items, so we shall deem the public hearings open and closed. Members wishing to call any specials? Mr. Reyes.
Item number 10, please.
Item number 10 called special by Mr. Reyes. Any other specials? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Closed sessions are items 15 and 16. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Let's hold all closed session matters on the desk.
On the supplemental agenda, item number 17 is an item for which public hearing has not been held.
And I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on item 17. We shall deem the public hearing satisfied. Members wishing to call item 17 special? Item 17, seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 17. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Going back to the items called special, item number seven is called special by Council Member Weiss.
Mr. Weiss, item number seven. Mr. Weiss?
Someone asked if he could talk to us.
Okay, the next item is item number eight, which you also called special. Seven and eight, we're holding it on the desk. Mr. Holden, Mr. Weiss is confering with staff.
Then I want to hear seven, nine. Okay, let's go for it.
Okay, item number seven. Mr. Holden, may I ask you to press your button, please? You have the floor.
Mr. Fuccioka, just tell us about this little snotty report you wrote.
At the last council meeting, our office was asked to take the time to review the RFP process for this contract, or series of contracts, for the Home Secure Program. We're given specific areas of focus. Subsequent to our review, we've reached the conclusion that the RFP process was not flawed, that it was done in accordance with existing county, oh, I'm sorry, existing city policy and procedures. At this point, we ask that you move forward in your decision toward these contracts. We have the department here to speak to the contracts themselves and what's being proposed, and I thought they're gonna join me at the table and speak to that part. But with respect to our role or our mandate, we have fulfilled that mandate and determined that there's no fundamental flaws in the RFP process.
Go ahead and talk, and then I'm gonna take off on it.
Okay, good morning. Rushmore Cervantes with the Department of Aging, along with Laura Trejo. In reference to this action this morning pursuant to the CAO's findings, the department stands behind the RFP process in which we conducted. In light of this transition of services, the department would be willing to acquiesce the extension of the contract for Delta through the end of the program year, which is March 31st, and have Mexican-American Opportunity Foundation take over the contract come April 1st. I understand, councilman, there's a request to have the contract for Delta go through April 15th into the new program year, and the department would be willing to accept that, provided there are sufficient savings, and there are program savings within Delta program. All we would need to do is have the authority to transfer said program savings from the existing program year into the next program year to cover the 15 days, thereby not penalizing the Mexican-American Opportunity Foundation. And that way, councilman, you would get through April 15th, the funding for Delta, and then Mexican-American Opportunity Foundation, because they did win the contract, would then have a contract in place, full funding year beginning April 1st.
If anybody's paying attention, Mr. President, members, this was a request by Ms. Perry and myself, whose districts are affected. There's not a person representing the 8th district at this time to call upon the CAO to review and make a finding whether or not the process was a fair one. I might add, Mr. President, members, I raised that question early on because we didn't have one constituent complaint over the past three years regarding the services being provided, or have been provided by Delta, which caused me some concern, and therefore I raised the issue. During the other discussions, Mr. President, members, we did not have any idea, nor do I, am I convinced at this time, that the RFP was widely disseminated to all parties who could provide that service. For example, the safety handiwork program, which is being done by Delta subcontractor, Home Secure Program, those individuals were not notified, and yet MAO... MAOF was notified. They do handiwork program also. They got the RFP.
Councilmember, MAOF is actually a contractor under our language.
For the home safety program?
No, they are a contractor of the Department of Aging.
I understand, but the others are contracted with...
So they would be on a regular list.
The others are contracted with the kind, a reputable organization, the kind of Los Angeles, and doing business in the city of L.A., and currently providing the Home Secure Program for the city, and they did not receive a copy of the RFP. You can't show me anywhere where they have, and you can't say that's fair at all. In fact, they could not contribute to the response to the RFP because they were told by the acting general manager at the time, "Don't share that information with them."
Who was told what, sir?
According to the acting director of Delta, who's told, "Don't let anyone know this RFP is going on." Now, she could be false.
That's entirely untrue, councilman. That is not true.
Well, I'm only telling you what I was told after the fact. And if that were the case, then they could not contribute to the response. And they, who were doing this work, never knew that an RFP was there on the table, and that's the reason why I raised the issue. The other thing that I'm looking at, Mr. President, members, is the scoring, the rating. On the rating, it clearly shows that the evaluators of these RFPs made some discrepancies here. For example, when they rated Delta for the services that are being provided, although we got no complaints, some people gave them as low as a one. Well, that doesn't...
Why are you taking away from me?
On Delta, they were evaluated, they got, one evaluator gave them a zero for participant contribution. Others gave them a lot higher for accessibility, eight. Some gave them all ones. For services that are being provided, they gave them like one. And when you look at the other evaluators, they gave them a total score of 28, 31, 22 out of 40. They gave Delta 18, 17, and 7 out of 40. And they're the ones already doing the work.
Sure. May I respond to that?
Well...
I reviewed the proposal per your request.
What?
I reviewed the proposal that Delta submitted, as well as the other proposals that were submitted by MAOF. The proposal was lacking in many areas, and that's why the reviewers scored them low. They did not describe the program that they were submitting to.
All right.
I shared that with you when we met.
Mr. Holden, let me ask you to take a pause. Let me recognize Councilmember Weiss, and I'll ask you to push your button.
I just want to make one more question, and I'll sit down. Then why would one evaluator give them a one, and the other give them an eight?
It depends...
So they're both looking at the same proposal?
Yes, they do, and part of what they're doing, so the evaluators, are independent judgment.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the issue of the process, on the issue of this RFP process, and I stand here as someone who, on Sunday, I was at a provider in my district, and the provider came up and said, "We consistently don't win in these RFPs. You gotta do something for us," but they don't win. And that's life. That's the way life works when you appear before a government body. There has to be due process. On the issue of the process, the department ruled. The CLA sees no defects in the process. The city attorney gave it an initial review. The city attorney gave it an appellate review. The CAO came to my committee and said it was all right. The CAO did an extra two weeks of busy work on this matter and concluded that everything was all right. So on the process, case closed. It's over. The RFP process was fine here. I just want to know, net-net to the taxpayers, what are you recommending, and what's Mr. Holden recommending? Because I think we've dragged this out long enough. Net-net, what's the bottom-line difference?
My recommendation, and I share this with Councilman Holden's staff, is that we start the new program here clean. It is at the end of March to conclude our contract with Delta. That would have provided them an extra two months.
Okay, we provided them an extra two months.
Yes, we did.
Expand on that point for one second.
We were originally requesting that a six-month extension under your committee, which was approved. As a result of these proceedings, we've now extended that period to the end of March, in order to be fair.
And at what point, and at what point in the process was Delta, and I've heard nothing but good things about Delta, I want to make that clear, but at what, yeah, can we have order in the room, Mr. Chair, President? At what point in the process was Delta put on notice that this was gonna come to an end?
We've been discussing this with Delta since I came to the department in December, so I know that they've been aware of this for several months now.
All right. Your recommendation sounds like the most reasonable way to get these much-needed services to the elderly in this community. We all wish we could double that funding. We all wish we could fund every provider who applies, but we can't. We have limited resources, and to spend extra limited resources on a process that has already been dragged out strikes me as a bad deal for the taxpayers. So I move your recommendation and ask the council to stand up for once on this matter and put an end to it.
Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I do want to see this come to its finality. Let's follow the process. But I did have an amendment to a motion, and last time we discussed this issue about a fair playing field.
We agree.
And I don't see anything in writing in the report regarding my request. I want to know from you, how is it that we're going to implement?
As we had discussed with you, in our next program year, we will then be distributing all the dollars that will be equitably distributed across the councilmatic districts, and we will be making that presentation to the Arts and Humanities Committee.
So the reference to the April 27, 1999 motion, where that was changed, where it was made a focus is created just for certain council districts.
Yes, correct.
Left out other ones. That's what we're going to see, that change?
Yeah, what we're gonna look at is then, one unified program, one amount of money that will be distributed equally according to the councilmatic districts or our service areas. So there will be equitable distribution, as you had requested.
Okay, so we'll see that in writing?
Yes.
And this is, I'm saying this for the record?
Yes.
Not that I'm insecure or anything, but, okay, thank you.
But we agree with that.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, this is nothing but sole sauce and bitterness, in my view. And I'm not gonna change my opinion on that, because there's been no evidence to suggest that I should. For example, when you look at the JFS program, they started back in 1977, 1982, 1999, 2000, to the present. Never been challenged. Sure, you let the RFPs, but it's been so rigged that everybody knew they should not even apply. And you look at the Harbor one, that went 1983, 1999, year 2000, to the present, the same darn thing. You say you, Mr. CAO, you say you submitted, these RFPs were submitted and distributed to people who could perform this service. Not true. They did. You have no proof of it. Did you do it by registered mail? No, you didn't. Because if I had done that, I would have known that early on. I'm hearing that for the first time, Mr. CAO. And in 1999, Delta got there first, in the year 2000, to the present. And what I'm saying to you is this: That is unfair, sole sauce, denying access to the program by others who could provide the service, even those who are currently providing the service. When you look at the scores from evaluation, and Mr. CAO, a member of your staff was a member of the evaluation, evaluating staff, and this gentleman came in from your department. And what does it say? They gave them, one evaluator gave one, Delta 18 and 7, a total of 45. When you look at these zeros they gave Delta, and then, and they've been doing the work. Home Secure Program, the organization you recommended has never done a Home Secure Program. They gave them 22, 28, 31, a total of 53, 73, 71. Don't tell me it couldn't have been that bad because we never received any complaints. Yeah, you railroaded this through, Mr. Weiss, because that's the kind of person you are. You don't look for fairness anyway. I never expected out of you under any circumstances. Fact of the matter is that it is dead wrong, not just wrong, it is unfair, whether you accept it or not. It's unfair what you're doing to Delta today. You know what? You remember this mistake you made.
Sir.
That's all.
I respectfully disagree.
Mr. Weiss, for a second time. You are the final speaker on the queue. That means you're ready for a vote. Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, what is the motion before us?
Mr. Weiss moved the department's recommendations was to extend Delta's contract through April 15th.
No.
No?
The 30th of March.
March 31st.
Not it being punitive. Initially, Delta came in and said April 15th.
Mr. Holden, you've had an opportunity to speak. The question has been called.
Then I'll say April 15th. I'm gonna see how punitive they want to be. I'll put a motion on the table, April 15th. The previous recommendation of the staff.
Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please read the motion before us, please?
Mr. Weiss moved the department's recommendations authorizing the general manager of the Department of Aging or designate to negotiate and execute a contract with the Mexican-American Opportunity Foundation in the amount of $260,474 for the provision of home secure program services effective April 1, 2003, through March 31, 2004, with two one-year renewal options, subject to the approval of the city attorneys to form a legality.
That's the recommendation of the department.
That's the motion before us.
Mr. President.
Mr. Holden.
And the Delta.
The motion from the department went to April 15th, and I'll go with April 15th. Anything else is punitive.
Well, the motion that is before us as read by the clerk.
Delta, Delta.
Okay.
And, and I'm sorry, and the Delta would be through March 31st.
Okay. The motion before us is as has been read by the clerk. Are we ready for a vote? Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, five noes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number eight, called special by Councilmember Weiss.
Mr. Weiss.
I believe we have a resolution on number eight. If I could hold it on the desk for a moment to just check with staff.
Okay, let's proceed to the next item for the time being.
Item number 10 was called special by Councilmember Reyes.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to take a pause and thank the department for submitting all these applications to deal with our water runoff issues and our water quality issues that affects our beaches and our waterways. But one point I wanted to emphasize, and I'm hoping that the department is continuing to work towards an end, but we are not just doing end of the pipe, brick and mortar, cement type of operations, that we actually start backing into a process where we can combine multiple uses, multiple goals, while we're using these funds. And granted, I know the proposals are submitted. I think they're doing a great job in addressing the TMDLs to the extent that they can. But I also feel we should be calling on Wrenckin Parks, should be calling on the CRA, should be calling in the other departments that have an impact on the neighboring properties that can be leveraged to create something greater than just underground pipes that deals with how we deal with this stormwater runoff, trash, and everything else that is ailing our bodies of water throughout our region. So my statement here points to our need as a body to start looking at how we can be more creative with our decisions and how we leverage these funds, combining other opportunities without missing the priority, which is to clean our waterways, to clean our environment, but also expand on leveraging and bringing in other kinds of concepts with these proposals. So for that, I just wanted to thank the department for the good work, encourage them that we need to be more creative with how we're using our resources, and let's look at the notion of leveraging with other departments and other resources. Thank you.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I appreciate your remarks, Councilman Reyes. And I think that's some of my issues on this item, but I would like the Bureau of Sanitation to come and answer some of my questions. Who's here? And if you could hold my time while I'm asking the questions. And then I have some more general comments about Prop 40, and I'd like Ron Deaton at that point to come forward. Looking at this, the department has requested $120,000 for a project in my district, which is Cabrillo Beach, which has been long suffering for a number of pollution problems. This is the Mother's Beach in San Pedro, which has consistently got an F every time Heal the Bay comes out with their report card for beaches in Southern California. It's one that we have really been targeting for a major cleanup, long-term solutions. But what I find that you're asking for is for money for a program where falcons are used to, I don't know, scare off seagulls. I would like you to walk me through this process. Do we purchase falcons? How do we release them? How does the process work that they scare away seagulls? Are falcons compatible with children? How does this work? Could you walk me through this process?
Okay, Neil Guglielmo with the Bureau of Sanitation, okay. Neil Guglielmo with the Bureau of Sanitation, Financial Management Division. My staff and I actually prepare, work with the divisions, prepare the grant requests. We prepared the grant requests with the Bureau of Sanitation. With regards to this particular item, I'm unfortunately unable to provide you a lot of detail because I'm the, we're the budget people.
Guards, can I ask for your help in clearing out the wings of the horseshoe here?
Okay. Again, we are the grant section within the Bureau of Sanitation. My staff and I work with the operating divisions. So we didn't actually prepare the grant proposal. So in terms of the detail on this item, we'd really have to report back to you to give you more detail. We have, I'm not a scientist. I'm not the person responsible for it. I work on the bureau's budget. I can tell you, in terms of how much we're asking for, for the various projects in terms of funding, where the funding sources will come from, I can address some very basic questions. In terms of the technical questions you probably have with regards to this particular project, I think we'd like to get back to you on that. I'd like to invite someone from the Engineering and Construction Division to come and talk to you about that.
Okay, well, that wasn't helpful at all.
Sorry.
I understand. Okay, then I'm going to move on, and if Ron Deaton could come forward. I think this is my concern, and I would hope that we would all have the same concern about Prop 40 funding. I think it's a very competitive process. I think many of us have targets in our own districts where we're hoping to receive Prop 40 funding. There's $46 million from Prop 44, just for clean beaches. I know Recreation and Parks is also putting together a package on proposals for Prop 40 funding. I guess what I would like to know, Ron, is, as a city, are we all on the same page in terms of applying for Prop 40 funding? I know many of us, even individually, have been meeting with our own state legislators, our assembly people, our senators, targeting specific projects in our own districts. Seems to me, this looks kind of a little bit like the left hand doesn't know what the right hand is doing. And before we use $120,000 for falcons, is that really the best use of Prop 40 money to clean up Cabrillo Beach? I have a much different idea of how to clean that beach up than to just bring in some falcons. So where are we as a city in terms of being on the same page for Prop 40 funding? It's competitive. As Ed Reyes says, we need to really leverage and be creative on these fundings. This is a one-time effort for many of us to really get some of this funding to clean up things in our district.
We've been working with the mayor's office and Wrenckin Parks and the city administrative office on the, there's, and I, there are different categories within Prop 40. This one, we had, sanitation had proceeded on that in cooperation with Wrenckin Parks. But the rest of it, we are working on a kind of a coordinated package that we would bring to council. Timing is still okay on that, and we need to put that package together. We're working, like I say, with Wrenckin Parks, try to target areas of special need of, both for the facility itself, but also for the community in that area. And I think that we should bring, we should be in a position in a few weeks to bring at least the preliminary stages of that together. But we've been working with people in Sacramento, and with state parks, and et cetera, trying to put together a more comprehensive package. It is difficult. Which district is that? The, the attempt is just that issue, is trying to be fair to all parts of the city, trying to be in a position to emphasize to the state that one grant to the city of Los Angeles is not equivalent to one grant to a city that population of 30th or 40th of our size, that we have, like each council district is, would be in the top 15 cities in the city, in the state. So kind of putting together a package to do that.
I guess part of my concern was that sanitation submitted 26 project proposals that total 59 million, when only 46 million is even available for clean beaches, with the idea that, gee, if we submitted all these proposals, maybe we would get a few of them. And that just doesn't seem very strategic, in my opinion. Is there, and the other thing, I've heard a lot of different answers to this question. Is there a deadline for these applications? Are we on time constraints? Because if not, members, I would like to continue this item and get together with Wrenckin Parks, I know personally, and to see if really the best solution for Cabrillo Beach is falcons, as opposed to a long-term cleanup solution.
I don't think there'd be any problem in continuing this one week, and we can get back with a report on the thing. The, I think most of these have been applied for by sanitation already. This is a follow-up. Let us get the context of this with the rest of Prop 40, and come back with your report. So maybe in fact, first week in March, what's next week? That's the first week in March?
Council will be in recess, so the 14th. The council will be in recess the 7th, 11th.
Well, we continue it one week, and then we can, if we need to, we can continue another period of time.
I mean, that would be helpful for me, so I would, I would move that we continued this one.
Mr. Reyes.
Yes, understanding we have these deadlines, from your point of view, could we look at the potential of working with the River Committee, since we have many departments in one committee already? And with your suggestion, which of those proposals could have the best potential for leveraging with other departments to something making, for making something greater than what's just being promoted? Is that, do we have that flexibility in the process?
Yes. And in fact, what we're doing is trying to at least anticipate how the people in the competitive process are going to be looking at this, so we can include in our proposals things that will enhance our ability to get the funding.
Great.
And I think that greater, the synergy of several pieces, we believe is a key part of that.
Absolutely. I just strongly believe, given that the, that particular waterway is a spine for all the tributaries and all the other waterways that connect through the city, or link with it with the lakes that are also serving as stormwater flows, if you will, that we could enhance our points. We can bring into light this kind of a process that makes it a little bit more creative with other departments, and, you know, deal with a fair share. So thank you very much, and looking forward to that.
Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, motion before us, please.
There was a motion to continue this matter for one week to March 4th.
That would be Tuesday, March 4th, Municipal Election Day. Is there any objection to that? Seeing none. This matter so continued. Next item, please.
Item number eight is still on the desk. That was called special by Councilmember Weiss.
Mr. Weiss, are we ready? If we're not ready, let's proceed to the next item.
Can, can we reconsider item number seven? I was misunderstanding on what we were voting on.
Okay. Members, we have a motion for reconsideration of item number seven, a matter which we have just dispensed with. Members, can I have everybody's attention, please? Mr. LaBonde, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, we have a motion for reconsideration of item number seven. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on reconsideration. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, 2 noes.
Item number seven is reconsidered, and now before us, Mr. Garcetti.
Yes, I thought, I believed, and I think this is the right thing, that the contract was done in a fair way. The RFP was done in a fair way. It was awarded the right way. There was, I thought, on the table, a two-week extension to allow the agency to ramp down, and I'd like to put that forward as a friendly amendment. If it's not a friendly one, we can vote on it. But just for the two weeks to allow the agency to ramp down, and that's it.
For it to be accepted as a friendly amendment, we need concurrence by the author of the motion. Mr. Weiss has not approved that as a friendly amendment. We have on the queue.
Out of current year savings, to be clear. I don't want a new appropriation for this.
Okay, we have Mr. Holden now wishing to be heard. So before we vote on the matter again, we would vote on what's been moved by Mr. Garcetti, seconded by Mr. Holden. Mr. Holden.
Mr. President members, I want to thank Mr. Garcetti because he heard what the department said initially, and that is they would extend it through April 15th, this contract. And of course, I guess, to me at least, it became very indignant when I, they were challenged, and I have a right to do that as elected official, and decided they want to roll, make it an earlier date, and not discharge Delta, which shows to me how they really personally feels about this organization, or their respective position as relates to doing business for the city of Los Angeles. The bottom line is that the staff is not in charge. The council people are. And when they get a little upset about, not me today, but you tomorrow, they'll come in with skewed data, skewed information, for the purpose of trying to convince at least eight other council members to go along with them. I want you to know that I fought very hard for Delta because their work performance was flawless. It's an organization of sorority of African-American women that got started early in the 1900s, and been very effective in terms of providing community service for our city, for our state, and for our nation for years, for those who need scholarships and all. And in my view, for them to have been badgered by Mr. Weiss and others here today, and I'm going to say that, I regret that it happened, and I feel very bad about it. I know he's going to respond to me, but that's okay. That was the idea in the first place. Get him up. All right, Mr. President, I support Mr. Garcetti's motion. He stood up for me today, and for Delta, and for my community, as we did for him the other day.
Mr. Weiss.
Maybe he did.
You could have pushed my button for me when you said the badgering. The badgering has been of this council by Mr. Holden, and this council should not give in. I ask for no vote.
Okay, members, we have before us a Garcetti motion, calling for the additional two-week extension. Is that clear? Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Roll is open. All members have an opportunity to vote. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, 1 no.
That amending motion is approved. Now we have the matter as amended by Mr. Garcetti's motion. Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with, please, and let's proceed to the next item.
Item number eight is on the desk. That was called special by Councilmember Weiss.
Mr. Weiss, are we ready for item eight?
We have a compromise agreement that will circulate at the desk that resolves number eight, and I would move that compromise. I want to thank, we have the residents here, we have the applicant here, we have Mr. Bowman, counsel for the residents, we have Mr. Gaines, counsel for the applicant. I appreciate all the hard work that you both have put in over the past three weeks, and I appreciate the work of my colleagues on the Plum Committee. Mr. Reyes. Mr. Reyes, Ms. Gruel, and Mr. Burnson, I think, was there at that hearing for considering the matter, and I'm pleased that at the end of the day, we have an agreement. It may not be everybody's first choice, but I am pleased that we have a compromise, and that we're going to go forward on that basis. So, the compromise is being prepared and submitted to the clerk, and I would move that.
Okay. Mr. Holden on item number eight.
Did I push my button on this?
Well, if that was erroneous, we can proceed.
Is there any opposition to, this came out of committee, and my question is, why did it come out with no recommendation?
Mr. Reyes.
The reason why it didn't come out of committee is because during deliberation in committee, the parties were still negotiating, and out of deference and respect to the council office, I wanted to make sure they had enough time to negotiate and come to an agreement, which they just have. So, without respect to the process, and to the council and the applicants, they give, they'd be given that flexibility.
Mr. Reyes, I want to congratulate you and compliment you, because you gave consideration to the council person who represents the district. And that's beginning to become rare around here. And the one you are helping in this regard, Mr. Weiss, is not even listening to what you said, because he knew you were going to be nice to him anyway. And if there's no opposition to it, to this matter, Ms. Sikowski, I know you vote a lot, know a lot, the two of you guys altogether, but that's all right, too. The time will come when there'll only be 10 members here, and I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote with you.
Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. We have a, I believe it's a substitute motion being circulated for this item. If, Madam Clerk, we are in receipt of that substitute motion, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Council calls forward at this time, Ms. Carlin Moore. Hold on, hold on, I have a bunch of hands up. Let's dispense with public comment, and we'll return to members wishing to be recognized before going into closed session. This is a public comment period, an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction, but not appearing on today's agenda. Carlin Moore, please, will be our first speaker. Please come forward.
To reconsider sanitation.
Carlin Moore, are you still with us? Going once, going twice? If not, Guillermo Herman? Please come forward at this time. To the podium there, sir. Sir, if you wish to address the council, can I ask you to use that microphone, please? Mr. Hernandez, can you help this gentleman find the microphone, please? The gentleman wishing to address the council, yes. Mr. Hernandez, can you help that gentleman find the microphone? Sir? Go ahead, please.
I have a program for, I have a program for making some, these metal placards.
I have a plan to make some metallic plaques.
With sentences of morals.
It consists with morals?
Against crime and violence crimes in public places. I have about 20 jobs.
About the use of arms against?
People.
People?
Of these cities. I travel from New York, Chicago.
I'm traveling from New York, Chicago.
And I know that crime is growing.
It's impossible to talk to people.
Because somehow, of one way or another, they feel bad.
Because somehow, they feel bad.
And they take aggression against people.
The idea is that these metal plaques.
Go directly to the mind.
Heart.
And I wanted to know if you could support me on this.
To work on behalf of the, the good of the human beings.
I have some jobs that I've made before.
Mayor Tom Bradley. Motivated me. To work in behalf of the good of humanity. Here you can see in these photos.
In the public places.
They would drop trash, bottles.
When rain would come.
Sometimes the public places would cloud it.
I was surprised when I saw the work that had been realized with Tom Bradley.
This.
The screens that they're using now.
And I just came to see if you could support me on this.
To prevent such damage to people.
So, you could avoid some...
Many bad things, killings. Inconscientia for...
On consciousness against?
Any person of any...
Of any race, any...
Of any intellectual.
Any intellect.
Any rich person.
Thank you very much.
Muchas gracias.
This concludes public comment for today's meeting. I had Mr. Reyes, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Holden wishing to be recognized. Mr. Reyes, first.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to move to reconsider number 17. I need to submit a map. It's a technical amendment. Item number 17 is a very exciting project, working with the school district, the mayor's office, community of friends, new schools and better neighborhoods, organization, and we are working on a model, we will mix uses between schools and residencies. It's a very exciting project, and I need to include this map to designate the location by which we are focusing on this new project. I'd like to ask for...
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Members, we have a motion for reconsideration of item number 17. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Item 17 is reconsidered. Mr. Reyes has described a technical amendment to the item, unless there's anything further.
No, just to include this map, then continue it to Friday.
Okay, so we'll continue the matter to Friday, as opposed to voting on the item today.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, 17 is continued. Mr. Pacheco, you wish to be recognized.
I was a special one.
Okay, we'll get there in just a second. Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, members, it's the last legislative day, we can ask for reconsideration of item number 16, whereby it was received and filed, for the purpose of referring it to the committee to discuss some of those issues that we brought up during that time. I ask for an I vote.
Members, we have a motion for reconsideration of item number 16 from the previous...
Mr. President, item number 16 hasn't been voted on yet, that's with the closed-session item.
Madam Clerk, it's item number 16 from the previous meeting's agenda. Members, is that clear, from the previous meeting's agenda, item number 16?
Can we ask what it was?
It was a motion relative to the military draft.
No, no, and the service, the alternative service, which you wanted to consider.
So, Mr. Holden has moved reconsideration, and asked that if reconsidered, that matter be referred back to committee in its entirety. Please open the roll. Please close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That matter is reconsidered, and so referred. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, there are two specials on the desk. Special one is a motion presented by Councilmember Pacheco, and the findings need to be made by the council.
Mr. Pacheco on the findings.
Today's the last day, colleagues, Mr. President, to act on certain jurisdiction on a airplane commission decision. I would ask for your support. I would like to send this to committee.
Members wishing to be heard on the findings? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the findings. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That matter is now before us, and without objection, refer to the Planning and Land Use Management Committee. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, special two is a motion presented by Councilmember Holden, and the city attorney will explain the need to make the findings.
Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll read into the record the findings prepared by the council member for the council to consider. On February 20th, 2003, the Housing Department inspected the rental housing units located at 1738 Roosevelt Avenue, and ordered these units vacated as a result of extensive building code violations. The Housing Department has determined that there are two tendencies at 1738 Roosevelt Avenue that qualify for relocation assistance at the $5,000 level, and one tendency that is eligible for relocation assistance at the $2,000 level. Pursuant to government code, council must first determine whether there is a need to take immediate action, and that the need for action came to the attention of council after the posting of today's agenda. If such a finding is made, the department requests that council authorize the disbursement of such funds.
Okay, members wishing to be heard on the findings? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Matter is now before us. Members wishing to be heard on the motion itself? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on special two. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Mr. President, do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Let's do housekeeping.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember, Ms. Sikowski requests to be excused Friday, March 28th, for personal business. That meets council policy.
Ms. Sikowski is excused.
Councilmember Pacheco requests to be excused Wednesday, February 26th, for personal business. A motion is required.
Mr. Reyes moves. Mr. Pacheco is excused.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused to arrive late tomorrow, February 26th. A motion is required on that one, and also to arrive late on March 28th, both are for city business, and March 28th meets council policy.
Okay, Mr. Burnson moves. Ms. Perry is excused.
Councilmember Burnson requests to be excused Tuesday, March 4th, for personal business. A motion is required.
Mr. Garcetti moves. Mr. Burnson is excused.
Councilmember Ms. Sikowski requests to be excused Friday, February 28th, personal business. A motion is required.
Mr. Weiss moves. Ms. Sikowski is excused.
And Councilmember Perry requests to be excused Tuesday, March 4th, personal business. A motion is required.
Ms. Hahn moves. Ms. Perry is excused.
And that clears the desk for closed session.
Madam Clerk, beforehand, and before recognizing Mr. Holden, what is anticipated attendance for next Tuesday?
Council has a quorum. There are four council members excused, and the vacancy, so there are 10 council members present.
So, to all members present at this time, I would like us to all take note that we have a bare quorum expected for next Tuesday, which is the date of the municipal election. So, all members need to be present and on time for us to achieve a quorum. Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, we have a jolly good fellow with us today. His name is Eddie Banks, celebrating 56 years of birth, and we want to wish him a happy birthday. He was born in Midland, Louisiana, started working for the city at the age 21. How about that? Served the city for 36 years, under three or four mayors. Where are you, Eddie? All right, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Now, that surprised him. I told him to come out and see me, he had something important to say. All right, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mr. Labonge?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to stand up and second the greeting to Eddie Banks. What is nice that Councilman Zion brought in Rick Orloff on his return to City Hall. Eddie Banks is a fixture at City Hall for the last 36 years, and helping people, helping people find their way to chambers, helping people to find their way, where to get an agenda, do all the good things that he does. And he's all got a pleasant, pleasant attitude, which is what all of our employees have, and he's a top-notch security officer for General Services, so God bless Eddie Banks. Happy birthday, Eddie.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, everybody. Thank you very much.
You've got a beautiful voice, too, Eddie.
Mr. Zion.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I want to also acknowledge Eddie Banks, fellow member of law enforcement, for all the fine work he did to protect us. And Eddie Banks, with his wandering eyes, saw a beautiful lady in City Hall and captured her heart, and Eddie's soon going to be walking down the aisle of matrimony, and he's going to enter that beautiful, happy time, when you find your love. And Eddie found that right here at City Hall. So, the city gives you a paycheck, and now you've got a beautiful, soon-to-be wife out of City Hall, Eddie. Many happy years to you.
Thank you.
Janice Hahn wants to find that hallway.
Okay, members. Madam Clerk, anything else before going into closed session?
No, Mr. President, the desk is clear.
If not, then in conformance with California law, the council will now adjourn into closed session. Guards, including Eddie, please go to the chambers. Welcome back into open session. Madam Clerk, next matter, please.
The desk is clear, Mr. President.
Members, are there any announcements today? Any announcements? Are there adjourning motions today? Please rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Burnson.
Yes, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Ty Longley, who was the guitar player with the group that was, died in the fire in the nightclub back east.
Senator President of the South Atlantic Valley. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I'm requesting that we adjourn today in the memory of Fabian Espinosa. Babs, as he was known to his friends, died as he slept in his bed last Thursday morning from blunt force trauma to the head, which he had received what has been described as an unprovoked attack two days before at Banning High School. He was 18 years old, and he was a resident of Wilmington. Fabian was a young artist, musician, writer, boogie boarder, and a jokester, according to his friends. He had broad musical taste, was an accomplished pen and ink artist, and had a special passion for poetry, particularly Edgar Allan Poe. Fabian had an infectious personality, and always had to get in the last word, which was used... Fabian had an infectious personality and always had to get in the last word, which was usually some sort of a joke. Fabian's mother said, and I quote, "I had a life before Fabian, before Fabian was, but I don't remember not having a son. That's kind of when my life started." Viewing is planned today from 1:00 to 7:00 at McNerney's Mortuary in San Pedro, and the funeral is planned for tomorrow at noon at the mortuary. Fabian's family plans to distribute 200 booklets of his poetry and drawings at his funeral, as well as 150 T-shirts bearing one of Fabian's favorite drawings, his version of Lewis Carroll's Mad Hatter on the front, and a poem of his on the back. It ends, "I leave behind life, but I have kept my soul, so forever I wait until the bell tolls." Fabian is survived by his mother, Charlene Remark, his 16-year-old sister Erica, his grandfather Frederick Remark, numerous aunts, uncles, and cousins, and all of his friends. This clearly was a huge, untimely tragedy, and he will be greatly missed.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, just about a week and a half ago, we had visiting with us Reverend E.V. Hill. He stood right there, and he gave, what a wonderful talk he gave to us here. That Saturday, following that Friday's meeting, he was hospitalized and in a coma, and he just passed away. So, Mr. President, members, he was a distinguished and senior member of the Los Angeles clergy. Reverend Hill was a pastor of Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church for many years, 42 years, in fact. He was only 69 years at the time of his passing. In recent days, he's been hospitalized, suffering from pneumonia, double pneumonia, and other LMS. Reverend Hill stood for what we believe in and was not afraid to stand apart from the crowd. In fact, he was a conservative, active Republican within our community, and he served us all well. Democrats respected him, Republicans knew him for what he was, and that was a very, very fair person. He championed many, as they say, conservative causes, and was a advisor to presidents and prominent Republican Party members. Pastor Hill was a force in the National Baptist Convention. Locally, he served on many city commissions, including the OIC. He was an organizer. He was the mayor's committee on economic development. He was a member of the Los Angeles Human Relations Commission and the Police Advisory Committee to the mayor. He was president of the Los Angeles City Housing Authority. He was the president of the Los Angeles City Fire Commission. He was in the STEP program, formerly known as the Foundation for the Poor. He was vice president of the National Baptist Convention, USA International, the Los Angeles City Planning and Zoning Commission, vice president. He was vice president and Baptist Ministers Conference of the City of Los Angeles. He was at California Graduate School of Theology. Reverend Hill has been every place, and he's done it all, for the people of our community, our state as well, and our nation. Certainly, he's going to be missed by all, and I was delighted to have him be known as my friend. And I'm going to stand here and say that he's one of the other pastors, and there are many, who is loyal and a friend of the great county supervisor, supervisor Kenneth Hahn. They touched him, and he touched them. He prayed for them, and they prayed for him. And I was part of the association, and those memories will be with me forever, and we're going to miss Reverend Hill.
All members, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. I just, I'm so sad to hear of E.V. Hill's passing. He truly was a man who had the courage of his conviction. He was so strong in what he believed, and he never shied away from speaking up for whatever principle or issue he was concerned about. He certainly was a friend of my father's forever, and continued to be my friend as well. Was very good about turning over the pulpit of Mount Zion Baptist Church to any of us who were running for office, and allowed us to speak as long as we wanted to, to the congregation, even when I was running for the Charter Reform Commission, which most people did not know what that was or understand what that was. E.V. Hill invited me to the church because he felt that the members of Mount Zion should be involved in reforming the city charter. So he turned over the pulpit to me that Sunday, as he's done many times. I was dear friends with his first wife, Jane, and it's, the only comforting thing about that is to think that he and Jane are together again. She was a dear friend of mine, and we studied the Bible together for many years, and we will really miss E.V. Hill. It's really sad time, and I loved it that even at the end, when he was not feeling well, he was down here, speaking up for affordable housing and for making sure that we on the city council did not forget how important it was to give people a decent place to live in this city. What a great man. We will truly miss E.V. Hill.
Mr. President.
Mr. Holden.
I just want to add that Ms. Perry requested that I introduce this motion, adjourning in memory of Reverend E.V. Hill, but I was going to do it myself. So let the record show that it's Perry or Holden. Holden Perry are introducing the motion, adjourning motion for Reverend E.V. Hill.
Other tributes? Mr. Labange.
Mr. President, I think we should send a message of condolence to the people of Chicago for their tragedy, as well as the people in Rhode Island for those two terrible incidents that occurred with the fire. So I'd like to ask if, as our president, you would convey that to their city council of our thoughts. I know Mr. Burnson adjourned in memory of a resident of his area. And also, members, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Albert C. Desmond, who was a lifelong resident of Las Feliz. He worked for the Department of Water and Power, the electrical section, for about 40 years. He had eight children, a great member of the Mothergood Council Parish. His beautiful wife, Miro, were married for 69 years. They'd go to nine o'clock mass at Mothergood Council, always sit in the front on the left, and they had many, great grandchildren. He died just recently at St. John of God at Adams and Western. But in the last few years of his life, and he lived to be 90, I would see him walking up Vermont Avenue with a little stool in his hand, because he would walk from his home near Las Feliz and Vermont up into the park, and every so often he'd have to take a rest. He truly was an absolutely beautiful man, who loved this city and loved his family, and he also loved the Department of Water and Power, which is a proud alumni for those who serve that public utility. So Albert Desmond and his beautiful family, we adjourn in his memory. Memorial is tomorrow evening, Wednesday, at our Mothergood Council Catholic Church on Vermont Avenue in Ambrose.
Ms. Miskowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to add on the tribute to Reverend Hill. When I started coming down to City Hall, it was about 1970, and Reverend Hill was then on the City Planning Commission. And one of the things, as Mr. Holden went through when he talked about all the various commissions that he served on, he was appointed to those commissions in this city by four different mayors, because he was a member of the City Planning Commission, then appointed by Mayor Sam Yordi. And there wasn't a mayor who came after Sam Yordi, who didn't appoint Reverend Hill and put him on important commissions. So it was a really, really wonderful man, who gave to the city all the years that he was here. I would also like to have the council adjourn in the memory of Reenie Moore. Reenie and her husband came from Pennsylvania in 1975 to Los Angeles immediately in the Marina Del Rey area, the city portion of it. She became immediately involved in local community activities, such as the LA Times Literacy Program, Save Our Marina Hospital, and the Westchester Playa Del Rey, LAX Chamber of Commerce. She volunteered her time to teach the local elderly how to use a computer so that they could stay in touch with their grandchildren. She and her husband resided in the Villa Marina area since 1976, and she's been an officer of the Villa Marina Council for the past six years. She was a true lady in the community and will be very much missed. She is survived by her husband, Dr. Jim Moore, and her son, Jeff.
Mr. Zion.
This is for Councilmember Jen Perry, as that I have us adjourn in memory of Janice Marie Tillis. Janice Marie Tillis passed away on February 18th. Janice was born December 14th, 1953, in Merced, California, and was employed at the Los Angeles Unified School District since 1976. Janice was a member of Macedonia Baptist Church. Janice was a sports enthusiast and was the coach of her grandson's Little League Baseball team, and a big Los Angeles Laker fan. She was a classy lady who exuded professionalism and reliability, and was a confident to many. She was loved by her family, friends, and everyone with whom she came in contact. Janice is survived by a daughter, Laquinta, one grandson, Trivon, three sisters, six brothers, and a host of relatives and friends. May she rest in peace.
Other tributes? Mr. Holden.
I think we should have all members for Reverend Dr. Hill.
We are presenting that on behalf of all members. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.
You are watching LA City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
We now join our scheduled program in progress.